Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Here.
Merringa.
Here.
Nordhut.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwaal.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Luis Sines from the Granville Genesee Congregational Church. So, for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation, and then we're going to follow that with a pledge of allegiance. Pastor, welcome.
Thank you, sir. And if on Sunday all of you are wondering what you're going to do, we're about a five iron away out the back door here. So, let's come together in prayer for a minute. Father God, Creator of all, we wish to say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself. For the measure of health, we need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing our appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us no matter what, from your boundless and graceless nature. Through Peter, you have told us that, above all, love each other deeply, and each one should use whatever gift he has received to serve others faithfully administering God's grace in its various forms. Therefore, we pray, Father, for our mayor, for various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. We ask that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. We pray for the agenda set before them today. Guide them with an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Granville. And it is in your most blessed name that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here, Pastor. Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you, sir.
So, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support. And support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Any opposition, please say no. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, regular meeting, July 25. You've had a chance to take a look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Motion. And support. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to talk about, emphasize? Okay. If not, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Great. Matt, bills tonight, we've got a couple sets, the old fiscal year, in the amount of about $128,000. Anything you'd like to point out before we open it up for questions on those?
Sure. Under the old fiscal year, out of that, $128,000 is $109,177.89. That is a June water bill, as you know, it's always typically the largest bill we have in the stack. So, that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Matt on the bills for the old fiscal year? Okay, no questions. Is there a motion to approve those bills in the amount of $128,373.57?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Any other discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. And the new fiscal year, a little more substantial, just over half a million dollars. And so, Matt, anything you'd like to point out before we open it up for questions on those?
I have one item on page one and two under elections, in the amount of $10,300. That is for pay for election workers, off 42 of them. That's what it takes to run an election, plus our clerk staff. Going through the list, we have a former city clerk in there. We have other employees who've also worked in the city clerk's office, but they continue at every election to come back and assist. That tells you the caliber of a clerk's office we have, we have had. So, I'd be happy to answer any of the questions that you have.
Any questions on the bills for the new fiscal year? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve those bills in the amount of $515,984.67?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Final questions, comments? Now, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Time for a public comment. I see we have a few guests here tonight. So, anybody who'd like to address the council, just come on up to the podium, introduce yourself, give us your name and address, and tell us what you're thinking about tonight. Cameron, welcome.
Cameron Zabekowski, 3831 Ben Street Southwest, Wyoming, Michigan, 49418. Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the city council, it's a pleasure to be here speaking to you today. I wanted to take a moment to introduce myself, as I'm one of several candidates for the Granville Board of Education this election cycle. For those of you who don't know me, my name is, as is stated, Cameron. I'm a 2004 Granville graduate, Navy veteran of eight years, and a community member of the Granville Public Schools District. I grew up down the street from here, about two blocks away off Otto and Henry, and my immediate and extended family have been a staple of the Granville Public Schools system for decades. I currently work for Student Veterans of America, which is a national veterans service organization headquartered out of DC remotely from Michigan. Over the years, I've worn many hats, and that started with my education in Granville. I have a Bachelor's of Business Administration from GBSU, a Diploma of Business from the University of the Sunshine Coast, Australia. I have multiple leadership fellowships, Legislative Research Fellowship, am a Department of State Benjamin A. Gilman Star, and am nationally recognized for my work and research, working to improve the lives of veterans through legislation and lobbying efforts in DC. I owe all of these achievements to the teachers at Granville, who saw in me something I didn't even see in myself at the time. Because of this, I came back to Granville. I've worked across the Granville School District as a state-certified K-12 substitute teacher, and occasionally as a long-term substitute in the middle school over the last several years. It's truly been rewarding to be a part of the Granville family again. Some of the areas I hope to focus my efforts on are ensuring the district is fully funded and that we are making sure our classrooms have the tools and resources that our students' educators need to be successful. Being an active listener, ensuring that the board works together with all interested parties to make decisions that are in the best interest of our district, its students, parents, educators, and administrators. Improving processes within our district to reduce bullying and to improve the mental health services for our students even more than we already do. And ensuring that we work with both educators and administration to reduce educator attrition and improve retention by building up community trust in our educators as the professionals that they are. Thank you for your time and for everything that you have done and continue to do for the city. I look forward to this campaign, its election, and the opportunity to serve our community the best I can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. When's the date of the election, Marcy? I'm sure you know.
November 8.
November 8. Okay, great. Thanks for being willing to serve. We've got a great school system, and I too got a great public education here in Granville, as did others. Anybody else like to address the council? Just come on up. Tell us what you're thinking about. Carolyn, anything on your heart tonight that you'd like to share? Ben? No. Kim?
Just here to listen.
Okay, all right. Last call. All right. Next item on the agenda, under ordinances and resolution, is a zoning ordinance amendment regarding group homes. And I read it, and JR, I'm sure you and Carolyn are very familiar with it. There were a couple tweaks to it, so now we have the final one. And so, Matt, you want to give us a little bit more background? Although you did a great job of giving background in our material stuff for tonight, so.
Thank you. These amendments, Section 7.02 and Section 12.02, stemmed from an inquiry we had from a nonprofit who was interested in locating an adult foster care, large group home, it's a mouthful, in a office building. The use wasn't great, so it's not allowed, so we let them know that. They asked the right question, though. So, where is it allowed? And it's not allowed anywhere within our city, and we are required to allow all uses somewhere in the city. So, Randy and I had a conversation. A large group home is 13 to 20 beds. So, where does that belong? It belongs in a multifamily zone. So, we posted a public hearing. We went to the planning commission twice, because we did these separately as we worked through this. And ultimately, the planning commission met in July, and then again, just last week in August, and recommended these two amendments to the city council. Section 12.2 references to special-aided uses. So, these uses are allowed in multifamily zones, but they must be allowed only as special-aided use, with the restriction that they cannot create any situation where they're condensed. A number of them are condensed in a single neighborhood. So, kind of a lot there, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I've got a question. I thought that, and maybe it's in the past, but I thought a small group home could go anywhere.
They are also special-aided, also authorized by the Section 12.02. There is something called just a group home, which is under six.
Oh, okay.
Those are allowed in any residential districts. The small group now is also only in the multifamily zones, just like these large ones would be. The small goes from six to 12.
Okay, but under six could be...
It's really seven to 12. Six and under anywhere.
Six and under, okay.
It's usually indicated. Seven to 12, and 13 to 20.
Any of these facilities would also be highly restricted and governed by the state of Michigan.
JR, anything you'd like to add?
No, I know we had some discussion about small and large, and reconciled that. So, I think we're on the right track here.
Marcy, what would this ordinance number be?
281Y.
281Y.
Can I grab a question?
Absolutely.
So, the planning commission, I'm just curious, who was the group that was considering wanting to do this? And my other question is, or, I mean, did anybody check with some of the other nonprofits, Harmony Homes, Hope Network, any of these organizations and their thoughts on this?
This is Guiding Light Mission from downtown. They wanted to relocate all their operations to an office building on Prairie Street.
But in regards to the opportunities in Hope Network, Harmony Homes, or Granville Homes, are they aware of this, and did they have the opportunity to weigh in?
We didn't talk to them specifically, except for posting this in the paper as were required.
There were public hearings, two public hearings were held.
I know, but so often, it's posted, but people miss it, or they're not on top of it.
So, I guess the suggestion is that we introduce it today, and, yeah, you could, any of us can contact anybody and let them know it'll be on the agenda again for final adoption, perhaps?
Guiding Light, we did tell them what our steps were going to be and what our thoughts were, and they agreed with us.
Where were they wanting to go, on Prairie Street?
On Prairie Street.
On Prairie Street, okay, okay. Okay. Just one real little minor correction. On Section 1, or Section 7.0, the last line, "within a neighborhood," just add a couple letters there, "with" to change to "within," I think. That's why it was meant. So, is there a motion to introduce ordinance number 281Y, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 281, the zoning ordinance of 2021, Section 7.02 and Section 12.02?
So moved.
Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? Questions, comments? Okay. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhut.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Was there a motion to table this?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Any discussion? All those in favor of tabling, please say yes. Yes. Any opposition, please say no. Okay, great. That will be back a couple weeks from now?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll reach out to all the parties we can think of. Hope Network certainly one of them, but if there's others out there. Certainly hope they are already working in our community, but we may think of others.
It's certainly a hard group or demographic to house, and there's a huge need for this type of housing. So, I mean, that kind of goes with my question, just want to be as inclusive as possible, so.
Next item is a resolution for the Mill Race Grant Agreement with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. So, this is an item we've been looking forward to, right, Matt?
Oh, absolutely. We had to apply twice, and we finally received the grant for $231,000 for improvements to Mill Race. As you recall, when we redid our Park and Rec Master Plan, this is rated high on that list. Unfortunately, the horse barn will have to come down. It's been determined not to be safe anymore. First, we've got to get Truce's stuff out of it, just as a side. Put a pavilion up, a natural playground is what we're proposing, something that fits the area, and some second loop of the trails on the south side of the creek with another pedestrian bridge to make that loop, as well as some pollinator gardens. So, this agreement and resolution allows us to begin that process, that project. And we've already had conversations with OCBA, who did the plan and our design work for the master plan. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Matt? Otherwise, I see we've got a couple people from the Park and Rec Board. Anything you'd like to add, or any thoughts or things you'd like to add? I mean, you've had a lot of input here.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to sit in on some of the meetings and get direction. One of the plans that we're going to work at our next meeting is with Dean Times and Claire. They have grants that we can go after, about $50,000 for playground equipment that we would like to earmark for Mill Race to offset some of the $230,000. So, there's a lot of things we're going to talk about at our next meeting, which is going to be in August, in two weeks, on how we're going to proceed. But I would like to have the opportunity to have a board member sit in with the planning of this and talking about it, because I don't think everything is etched in stone about what has to be. But I think, I just think that it would be a good collaborative. That was my opinion. Thank you for this work.
Thank you for serving on the Park and Rec Board. Appreciate that.
The $50,000 he's talking about would actually be in addition to what we're doing right now. So, it'd be just a little icing on the cake, if you will, if you'd like.
Now, Matt, Randy just reminded me, this money comes from the Special Project Fund?
It matches.
The match, the match.
The 50% match.
Yes. Okay, good. It's nice. We have a Special Project Fund that has money.
That was a wise idea when this was put together.
I think you know who did that, right? Who kind of pushed that? Marcy, what would the resolution number be on that?
3285.
Any other questions for Matt about this project?
JR? Mayor, I know you and I both live close to this region, and I guess Josh does too on the other side of the creek. A lot of those people who live in IRS think that their property goes a lot deeper than it really does. Are we doing anything proactive to let those folks know?
We recently completed a, had more than just do a survey out there and put a bunch of stakes out.
I've seen those.
So, that was kind of the first, you know, hey, we're doing something out here. And I had a couple of calls from people who wanted to remove the stakes and let them know. No, they're there for a reason. So, as we get into this more, there'll be further conversations with that.
We would, as more, we would like, we would probably offer the opportunity for the folks on IRS to stop and voice their approval, disapproval, or their opinions. Bottom line is, we all find common ground and grow from there. If everybody's going to have a big session, then we're not going to get anywhere. If we find that little bit of common ground to the folks on IRS, we might get further ahead.
You know, I remember years ago, I don't know, Matt, it may be before your time, Randy, maybe you remember, there was a master plan, Park and Rec Master Plan, that showed this project, showed this property. And one of the proposals that made its way in was campground, or like camping. And I remember the folks on IRS showed up, but I don't remember them objecting to anything other than the proposed camping, which we totally nixed. It's like, I don't know how this got in the proposal, but there was a lot of fear about all kinds of things that could happen back there, so.
That would make a lot of sense. Well, and no camping.
No camping.
And typically, every park that we've built, we've always had the neighbors in that they're in it, because frankly, it's very valuable. It's made a lot of changes.
Yeah.
And one thing, building planned right now on the south side of the creek is a trail along the creek.
Matt, what's the timeline? Maybe it's in the memo.
We hope to have it, this may be pushing it, but to have it bid yet this fall, so we can get ahead of any material delays.
But then, construction next year, possibly?
Construction next year. We have to have it done by July of '24. Now, there's exceptions that we could apply for.
So, council thoughts about contacting the neighbors and just letting them know?
Like I said, I use the word proactive for a reason. The more they know, the less likely there are to be roadblocks down the road. As you can see, the property of the Mill Race Park goes through what, assuming there was a basketball court of a property you're familiar with.
Yeah, there was no basketball court, I don't believe, at that time.
Yeah, right. But there's a concrete pad there now, and I just, you know, would love to have all of these folks just know what's happening, what's coming, and...
We've had a conversation with that family. So, they're aware. That's why we started the survey, particularly because of that, in addition to this project.
I do love it. Awesome. And how have your conversations so far gone with families?
Well, with that family in particular, they weren't aware. They bought the house, and the basketball court was already in place. So, they weren't aware. There was also a language barrier, which I brought a staff member in with us who spoke Spanish, who's no longer with us, unfortunately. So, I've talked to some other families out there who are in the area. They're aware of it, too. But again, we're transparent. We're happy to have as many conversations as it takes to make them aware that we're putting this trail on the south side of the park.
And it is quite, it's as far away from the homes as possible, basically, on that side of the creek.
It's, we're not recommending it be an asphalt trail or anything, I think. It was discussed in the Park and Rec Board as a, what'd you call that, a chip and fine? A chip and fine trail?
Chips and fine, which is what we've used at Heritage. We used it for quite a while at Calvin Crest until they paved that. But that's what's been at Heritage for 30 years. Great stuff. Because it's natural as possible.
Yeah. Yeah, it probably floods occasionally in that area. I don't know how high up it comes, but so that's nice.
Probably does, but the chips and fine actually gets quite hard. They post strollers and everything else on it. It's pretty stuff.
Okay.
And records very little maintenance.
Charlie's not here tonight, but Jim's here, so, from VPW, so, very low maintenance, that's, you catch that, right? Okay, so we've got Resolution 3285. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 3285 regarding the grant agreement and allocation of funds to match the DNR Trust Fund Grant for improvements to Mill Race Park?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Yeah, if we could contact the folks on IRS, just a little heads up. I mean, it is city-owned property, but just to be a good neighbor. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next item is the consent agenda. We have the police and treasurer, police report for July, treasurer's June report, also the planning commission meetings from their July and their August meeting. Also, we have the proposed appointments of officer employee delegates to the MERS annual meeting, and I believe that is Tammy and Marcy, is that?
Ken and Jana.
Not even close, was it? No. And I read it, but I should have checked right before I said that, so, okay. All right. Ken and Jana for the MERS annual meeting. We also have a couple purchase requests. So, approval of the consent agenda would be in the best interest of the city. First one is replacement dump box, and there's a memo on that. And then also the, let's see, that amount is $28,363 from Truck and Trailer Specialties. And then we also have another purchase, seal coating for the 30th Street parking lot, city-owned parking lot, not a city hall parking lot, seal coat from Harding Enterprises in the amount of $7,425. So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Anything anybody'd like to discuss, any of the reports, any of the purchases, any questions on any of those items? Okay, if not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Matt, city managers' report.
The only additional thing I have to report is that the Vintage Fest is this weekend, Friday and Saturday. I put out the flyers by the door. If someone wants to grab them on the way, I has the full schedule. We got some awesome bands, as always, and again, Truce has loaded up the schedule for a lot of family-friendly activities. It's always a lot of fun.
Great. JR, any comments you'd like to make tonight?
You know, the only thing I wanted to just echo was in Ken's memo, just the staff urgency for, after that last session we had, well, a few sessions ago, to run down the hall and fax that order in for the fire truck and beat the other two municipalities that did that on the next morning. So, I think it just shows the dedication of our staff to, one, you know, get things done, and two, save us money where we can. So, I just kudos to, obviously, the fire department for getting everything together, and obviously, city staff for making that happen. And I will be emceeing the pie eating contest on Saturday for Vintage Fest, which is always a favorite. Usually, it's kids, but... I'm going to sign up Justin for that event.
Like a complimentary entry or something like that?
VIP. That's it, thank you. Just to echo what JR said, that was really proactive and really great thinking on part of Tammy and Fire Chief there, and the jump ahead of those two municipalities and getting work done that night at our city council meeting, getting that fire truck. So, great work, excellent work. And if Tammy were here, I was going to praise her. Am I right, Matt, that maybe she only has one more council meeting?
She does.
And that would be the next one?
Yes.
I might be, might not be at that meeting, so I regret that she's not here tonight. But I will submit my remarks if I'm not here for you to read. Matt? Okay, thanks. That's all.
Just Chief Anglem, thanks for getting the officers in continuously in active shooter response training. Thank you for working with the schools and, you know, God help us, you know, throughout the country with what's been going on. And it falls on you guys, and it's a great plan. We just have to implement it. So, thank you.
Justin?
Other than formally with...
Other than formally withdrawing my name from the pie eating contest, I don't have any.
Josh?
So thanks to Marcy and the clerk's office and all the volunteers for running a smooth election again. So it sounded like everything went really well, and pretty good turnout for August primary election, so. Congratulations to those that were successful there. Also wanted to just say I'm glad that we're finally moving forward with this grant from the state. It's been kind of a long time in coming. We've applied a couple times, as was mentioned. A lot of work's gone into, you know, putting that application together and really putting the ideas into it. So looking forward to the next step, where we can start kind of moving forward with our design and hopefully seeing the progress being made out there. I think it'll be a good asset to the community and to the neighbors. There are some nice amenities to add to that park, which needs, has needed a little bit of attention, so. You know, and we're also kind of fulfilling our goal as a council here, which we talked about a year or two ago now, to strategically invest in our, you know, public spaces and parks and recreation. So I think that's very good. And I just wanted to say thanks to the chief and the department for doing the police in the parks. You know, that came to an end last week, right? It was the last one, and looks like that was very successful. Appreciated seeing all the pictures and all the information there, but good job on that, and thank you for doing that again this year.
We had a great time, and thanks to Parks and Art Committee for funding our handouts. Those were a big hit this year, so.
That's it. Thanks.
Randy?
No questions or comments tonight?
Okay. Yeah, just echo and invite everybody to the Vintage Festival this weekend. It's going to be great. I am playing keyboard with Sam Swing Band on Saturday, and I'm practicing hard already. It's a little out of my comfort zone to do the swing band music, but I love it, so it's going to be great. So hopefully it'll be nice weather, and yeah, I'll have the music down by then. Also, thank you to Chief Anglom for participating, along with some of your officers, in the National Night Out last week, Tuesday morning. It's always a good event. You see all the mayors and the police officers and first responders. It's always a good event at Consumers Energy. And then just on a personal note, wanted to thank everybody who came and visited during my mom's visitation for her funeral and the cards, and also for the beautiful flowers that council city staff sent as well. It's a very cool thing, I was planting 10 trees in the national forest in my mom's honor. So thank you very much. That was very thoughtful and just a really nice gift. Let's see, other than that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. Enjoy the rest of your warm summer evening.